Um, over the last several weeks, there's been some discussions here and at city council meetings related to downtown parking. Stephanie DeVito is here from the downtown bid and she conducted a survey of the downtown businesses as was requested. Sergeant Gylfus is here and he's got some input related to enforcement issues and technology and really can speak to what our parking enforcement officers are seeing actually out on the street. What we're hoping for is that if not tonight, relatively soon, that we can get some direction from council related to how you'd like to proceed, related to parking downtown, and we may throw a little bit of a quick discussion in there as related to the parking garage as well as we move forward, try to wrap it up into one, one, one plan moving forward so we can adjust policy and do whatever we need to do with our hardware and things like
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to update you on the two-hour free parking that has been implemented about six months ago. So just a little backstory of a survey, more or less like an email, that went out to more than 100 businesses in the downtown district to kind of get their feedback on if they enjoyed the two free hour parking, how their customers felt about it, if they saw any changes or any tweaks that needed to be done to the two free hour parking, and also if they would like to see the two free hour parking continued. So they had about a week's time to respond to that email and they keep trickling in. We've had 18 responses, so 18 businesses represented. As of four o'clock this afternoon, I had received the last one, so I'm sure probably in the next week or so, they still will be coming through my email. I'd like to just go ahead and, and list the responses because it's a variety of businesses that we've had in the downtown district, just so it gives you an idea and an overview of how many businesses participated in the survey and what types of businesses they were. So we had Prison City, Rudolph's, Sam Shoes, Regenerations, The Liberty Store, Quilts by Commission, Vape Cult, The Bach Building, Bach Real Estate, Nash's. We had an artist, which is also a consumer, that responded as well. Kyuga Community Health Network, Silbert Optical, The YMCA, Plaza of the Arts, Office of the Aging, The County Clerk's Office, and Quality Rental, and then Mark Lawn Optical. So those were the responses that I received via the email to the email survey that went out to the downtown district's businesses. So I'm going to start with the positive comments that we received, and what I did is I compiled all the responses from all the emails and just kind of highlighted the things and took them out of their emails as their response to what we sent out. They are as follows: Increased traffic downtown. It assists the elderly for pickup and drop-off. Curbs negativity and complaints about parking. The customers love it. The convenience of running in and out as well as for deliveries and takeout for restaurants. In favor. It's a nice, great benefit, a really nice feature. Customers are thrilled. They love the two-hour parking. It's nice because we compete with strip plazas and malls that have more parking than we do downtown. Customers were surprised but greatly appreciated it, and they were favorable by customers. Brings more revenue to businesses, which in turn increases sales tax for the city. Also, the, the thing the other businesses talked about is that they were also willing to try to chip in to advertise the two free hour parking if it were to be, continued to be implemented. So, you know, that is one thing that we did in past history, myself, and I'll touch upon the past history at the end of the presentation. But, you know, some of the businesses already do let their customers know and educate them of the two free hour parking. They have little signs in the windows or little plaques on the countertops as they, as they leave their business. So thoughts of concerns, moving on to that. Comments that we are aware of that were not surprising to me, and, you know, as we, we mentioned, we do have a parking committee, which we have community members. We have Council McCormick, City Manager Jeff Deiker participates periodically. So we have a wide variety of folks that are on our downtown parking committee. So as we all discussed in the past, when we were looking to implement the two free hour parking, it was not a surprise to us that we would have to probably tweak some things if it became, you know, an extended period of time or a long-term solution to the downtown parking. So these comments and thoughts of concern do not surprise me as well as I don't think it'll surprise many of you. So comments are as follows: Non-customers parking in spots. Monitored in ticketing of merchants, tenants, and employees. Renters and employees need to park in accordingly their lots. More signage would be needed. Concerned it will be passed on to customers and taxpayers due to the loss of the revenue. Businesses not letting their own customers know of two free hour parking. And then one also said, "I would rather give my customer 25 cents for parking versus having tenants and business owners park long-term on the street." That has become a major issue for me. Suggested only December for holidays only, but the customers do love it if it could be controlled. So those were the thoughts of concern that came through all the emails. And as I mentioned, I think there's a common denominator that we, we see in those thoughts of concerns. It's the monitoring, the trafficking. You know, I do rounds three times a day. I do see that that is a concern. You know, I can definitely see vehicles sitting there all day, and if they're not in one spot for three or four hours, then they've moved four or five spots down the street and sit there the rest of the day. So, you know, that is definitely a concern. We knew that from the very beginning, but as Officer Gylfus is going to touch upon some things that, you know, might be able to help control that and kind of solve that situation. I do want to kind of just end my portion of the presentation with kind of just the past history going back about six years ago. I myself, that was a big initiative, to try to get all the employees and actual business owners off the street so that we could give all our customers, you know, ample opportunity to park downtown. So with this program that, you know, council approved to have two free hour parking, this program was initiated to help the customers, to bring in more people to our downtown, to bring them into our, from our region, and, which also is, is a comment that was made in one of the emails. It helps the business owners generate business, but also in turn helps the city generate sales tax. So it is kind of a win-win for everybody to get them in downtown, as long as we can monitor and control it. So that's what I did six years ago. I literally went into every business, chatted with the business owners. We worked with them heavily to try to get their employees parking in their designated lots. And again, I stressed it wasn't the idea that it was illegal that they couldn't park on the street because a lot of them were paying and feeding the meter, or they were pangling. So a lot of the response I would get was, you know, well, they're, they're paying, but they're not doing anything wrong. They're not doing anything wrong illegally, but by principle alone, I feel employees should not be parking on the street in front of their business in the prime spot. Those spots are for the customers. So I worked very hard with them, got them mostly all off the street to the point where Officer Gylfus can probably attest to, we have very, very few cars over probably a good three-month time of span of trying to get them all in their designated spots, and it worked. And to this day, we still have a lot of them that it's still working. But what we see, which I can correct by re-implementing that, that visit to them to make the awareness and the education about the program continuing possibly if it's approved. We have new turnover of employees. We have new management that is different. So, you know, a lot of things have changed over the years, so some folks have slid back into their old habits, whereas others have really, you know, took hold of that and, and held true to helping us out with that. So I want to thank you for, for your time, and at the end, if you have any questions in regards to any of the survey or anything that's been done in the past, I'd be happy to answer questions, and I'll turn it to Greg.
Good evening, Mayor, City Manager and Council. Touch on what Stephanie just talked about. I'd like to touch on that stuff on the parking enforcement side, the issues that we've been seeing. And like she said, it was no surprise. We knew that we were going to have vehicles that were going to park all day. We knew they were going to have, you know, people that would move their cars over a spot or two, restart that two-hour time clock, pull forward in a spot, back up in a spot because of, we mark valve stumps. That's how we, we tracked the two hours. Had issues of employee parking. I see employees are parking out all day in those same spots. Part of the issue that we have is our software that we use to regulate our parking downtown isn't set up for this type of parking. Ours is set up for the two-hour expiration time. Once it expires, you do display pay or, or you use the meter. You can tell by walking up to your vehicle if you, if you're overtime or not. And for people that feed the meter, we have, that's what the valve stem marking is for. So that's what our system is set up to do. It's not set up to, to regulate the, the two-hour free, free parking. There's other software that would have to be purchased to, to help us regulate that and do the enforcement efficiently. I'll touch base too for the feedback that I got back from my personnel. The atmosphere downtown for the two-hour parking is much better. They feel the people, the customers, everybody seems to be a little less on edge about parking and if they're going to get a ticket or not. So that is definitely a positive. One of the other issues, not issues, one of the other things that we've, we've been doing, we, and still, and I feel it works very well, is the warning program that we have. I don't know if council is aware of that. A while back, we instituted a, a warning system. So basically, we have software that if I walk up to a vehicle, it's overtime and we're going to issue a ticket to that vehicle. It'll check our records to see if it's, if it's had a ticket or not in the previous six months. So if they've had a ticket in the previous six months, then a warning, say if they have not had a ticket in the previous six months, it will issue a warning for us. If they have, then we would issue a ticket. So that, that's a system that we've carried on, and that went through this two-hour free that's been carried on as a, as a program's carried on throughout that. So there was a kind of a, a double freebie. You got the two-hour free plus you got a warning if you did go over. Just to touch on, I'd like to touch on revenues and kind of let the council and kind of know where that kind of sits with the, the two-hour free that we did. So it's, May 28th is when this all starts, about five and a half months' worth of free parking has been going on. In that time period, we compared it to a time period where we knew it was kind of the last, we took COVID out of the picture, and then one year we had an issue with employees that we weren't fully staffed. The last good year that we had that we were fully staffed and everything was saying "normal," quote unquote, was back in 2018. So the same time period, May 28th, 2018, to November 1st, 2018, to this year, in fines and in tickets, we collected roughly $88,000 in fines and tickets. The same time period during the, the program, we collected a little less than half, about $40,000. So the difference was about $40,700. The money that was collected from the, the kiosks in that time period was about $86,000, and then during this time, kiosk stand meters is about $3,300. So it was about an $82,900 difference in revenue that we lost between the two. So if you had both of those up between fines and kiosks and meters, it was about $123,600 that we didn't collect during the free program. And granted, I want to touch on also both the tickets that are issued, that's not just downtown, that's also alternate side and what the police officers issued as well, but that's a very small portion of it. Probably the bulk of that comes from parking enforcement, which we had one full-time person and two part-timers. Ticket numbers, if you're curious about that, it's probably roughly 2,800 or less tickets were issued in that time period. I'll open it up for questions, if anybody has any that I can try to answer as far as that. Oh, I apologize. One more, sorry, Councilor Cuddy.
Oh, no, 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 that's fine. Sorry.
Either way we went, if we were to institute the program back to the way it was, two-hour parking, either way we go, we have to, I guess, invest in some of our equipment. Our kiosks are going to need a modem update to go from 3G to 5G. We have a total of 22 kiosks, 21 of them need the upgrade, so it's about $10,000 to do the upgrade on the modems. And roughly, and if we go, if we keep the two-hour program going where it's free, we'd have to update our, our software on our handhelds for that enforcement that we talked about. And that's going to run us initial $4,000 for the software and about $1,100 a year for the answer.
Great, Sergeant. Thank you. This is very helpful, and I, I want to make a proposal because, number one, I do think the upgrades need to happen regardless of what the council decides. I, I think that, you know, these, all of these, even though they're costly, you know, and future councils may, you know, decide to either go back to two-hour free parking or institute the, the full, full charge and whatnot. My proposal is this. I think we should invest in the, the upgrades that need to happen. I think that that means, because we've seen issues where we might have skipped one of the upgrades and then it becomes obsolete. So we want to keep our equipment as current as possible. I think that that's, that's important. But I would like to recommend, for now, an extension for the, for the purpose of our comptroller. The numbers that Sergeant Gylfus has provided us is, is very sobering, right? We have, we are not collecting as much in parking, but what we may want to do is, to the best we can, is to leverage the increase, hopefully, increase in retail sales tax in that time and try to come up, see, see if, if there is a benefit. If we, if we do that, then we can justify continuing this. But I do think more time needs to be maybe like another six months to, to just see if, if it's worth it. You know, that, that's my thought. But I, obviously, my colleagues might have other ideas.
Me? Okay. Where am I? Just to be clear for the public's knowledge, the, the fees and the, the ticket fees and all that that we collect, isn't profit? Is that, or, well, you're not the comptroller, are you?
I wouldn't be able to answer that.
I know.
No, that, that, those are numbers that I got from the treasurer's office.
How much did you just know?
Just to look at.
I'll ask the city manager. I'm sorry.
It's, it's my understanding and our approach to it since I've been here that this isn't, no, it's not there to create revenue, it's there to offset costs, right? The cost of parking enforcement.
Right.
And the purpose of parking enforcement is to create turnover downtown, which benefits the businesses, and to create a safe environment downtown or on the side streets or what have you. There is certainly a cost of maintaining our parking lots and equipment, whether they be kiosks or old-style coin-fed meters or, coin, not corn, fed meters, and the, the personnel related to that. So again, I, I don't think that it's ever really been a huge revenue stream by the time we back out the expenses related to the program. It's, it's a method to create that turnover that, you know, that's the, the other side of the story that I've heard with the downtown merchants is that they appreciate the effort. They like when their customers are happy, but they know that there is abuse, and if there is no enforcement, they all recognize there will be widespread abuse. That would be something else that we would like council to consider potentially. We haven't talked about anything specific, but there are some recognized abusers downtown that, at the current, the current rate and the current method to penalize those folks does not seem to be having the intended effect.
No, correct.
Right. Sergeant Gylfus could tell you some more detailed stories. So we may want to look at a way to take some of those people that, that just don't want to comply with that and, and be more influential.
Yeah, right. I've got a few more. Well, a state statement and a proposal too. There's residential parking, or residential downtown more than there ever has been, and I know that's a problem. People, even if they have designated parking, they park on the street all night. And then there's employees and there's shop owners, retail owners, and who knows, that park out and, and take spots all day. They feed the meter. And pretty much we know who they are, or they know. Each merchant knows someone next door to them that does it, and it's frustrating to them because they, the whole purpose is to keep turnover, to help businesses make money. And I think it's up to the businesses as well as the city and the bid, but I think business owners, property owners, need to be more proactive with their employees, with themselves. Look in the mirror. To be parking on the street in front of your business all day is, just, it's not right. And, and we're going through all this to manage it and to pay for it, and it's all, a lot of it could be avoided, the spaces, if people did not park downtown. So that's, that's one thing. The long-term parking for residents, but the, what I thought would be a good idea, if we're going to invest in, well, we have to invest in some of this regardless, but if we're going to purchase the software to monitor the two-hour parking, I see, talking to the res, or the business owners, the retail ones, this is really great for their, their, their customers and their business, and it's only going to get better. I would like to just see us continue it. Two hours. Just, just continue it. I mean, you're going to go through all this for six months. I don't see any merchant that's going to come in and say, "We don't want this anymore." I think it is, but again, I know that monitoring it is going to add a layer of...
There will be other additional costs to that, not just the software. You're going to, we're going to have to...
Signs.
Well, signage is one, but we're going to have to find, come up with a system to basically number all the stalls. So when the parking enforcement comes around, okay, I remember that car being there, but is it in the same spot?
Yeah.
We've got to have a way to document that.
Yeah.
So there's some things of that, that nature, we'll have to come up with the size of signage.
Well, I think with COVID, it's going to take a while before everything, if ever, goes back to routine. And this is just a little thing in the big picture, but to the merchants that have come-and-go traffic, pickup, and if we can get the merchants and employees to not park in this, in the front of their stores, and we can just afford the public and the shopping public the ability to come down for two hours and do what they ought to do and go. I think it's, it's well worth it, and I'd like to see us stick with it. Just make it happen.
I just want to clarify, I didn't mean to make it sound like, I just, I didn't, like we're, the city is making money. I meant...
Oh, no, I didn't mean you did.
I just meant that, yeah, that, that we need to pay for the enforcement of the...
There's...
That's where the, the revenue comes from, to pay for the enforcement, because I definitely...
No, I didn't. It wasn't directed at you. There's a perception I've had people say to me in many different ways that, that we're just trying to make money. Nothing we do is to make money, actually. It's to pay for the service. That's it. So that's it. I'd like to put my, put me down for permanent.
Thank you, Mayor. Sergeant Gylfus, obviously my two colleagues are in favor of two-hour free parking. In theory, I'm in favor of it, but like anything, we were talking about redundant water lines tonight. You know, we need to get those who are tasked with, with doing the job of it, their, their honest feedback and input. Do you think that this is doable if we invest in, in the proper tools?
Yeah, so that, that is the big hinge point. Right now, we don't have those tools to do it efficiently. We have those tools, it's absolutely doable, and there's no doubt in my mind that we can't do it. It's just, we need the, the software. We have to do some rethinking about how we're going to label downtown, and it can be done.
One of the things that's been brought up is, I guess, abuse of, of the two-hour free parking. And I, I live downtown, I work downtown. I have seen it firsthand in the last four or five months. The same vehicles parked in the same spots every day of the week. I think there needs to be some concerted effort at outreach to the businesses about employees and where they're parking. And maybe it's even having a conversation about what our long-term parking rates are in, in city-owned lots and in the parking garage. We know the parking garage is underutilized. If you look at what we charge to park in there a month, it's, it's not a lot of money.
No.
But if people still aren't doing it, maybe we need to talk about working on that, and maybe some type of sliding scale depending on how many employees somebody has. Because then maybe, maybe that encourages a business owner to say, "Okay, I have 10 employees. This is what they're going to charge me per month. I would rather have those spots open in front of my business for my customers. I'll work with my employees to buy these long-term parking passes." I think that needs to be part of the conversation. I don't think we've revisited that in a while. The other thing that I would be in favor of is, actually, let me ask this question. How much do we charge for a parking ticket if you're exceeding the two hours?
Twenty dollars.
I think it's time to revisit that, and I know that's not a popular thing, that, but if we're offering two, I know, and I know it's not our decision. I know we have to go to the court, but we don't know if we don't ask, right? And if we're offering two-hour free parking, I think somebody just said that the $20 ticket really isn't a deterrent for the person that's continuously violating it. We've, we've even, I was, the last one that we booted was $900.
I'm sorry?
It was $900 was the last vehicle that we booted, and they choose to park where they want to park, and that's, to them must be, to touch on your $20 to them isn't a big deal, and so obviously it adds up. They paid their fines off and they continue to still do the same thing, so.
After the $900?
Still doing it. And I know, I know a parking ticket is not a good topic with anybody.
No, it's not.
But if we're offering two hours free, then there really is no excuse, right? Because we've offered you two hours.
And you're getting a warning for, you're getting two warnings a year for free. That's all on top of that, so.
It hasn't been changed in a while. I can't remember. It's probably been ten...
It's a very generous system. Right now, it's very generous, and it's as far as the two hours free, and even if you're first offense, you're going to get a freebie. So it's not, we're not giving people the opportunity to, to learn the system, and I think it's just a choice that they're, they're making to, obviously, not follow the rules.
And I know we'll get beat up over, they say hypothetically speaking that we were to raise parking ticket costs. I know we'll get beat up over it, but quite honestly, I'm getting beat up over this right now. My phone, my phone has been ringing off the hook this week.
And historically, compared to any other municipality, our rates are very, very reasonable. That includes the parking garage and our fines and our distance street fee for 25 cents for 15 minutes. I don't know where you're going to find that.
Do not. Well, there's a building down the street, down Genesee Street, that has, gives their tenants, but they buy the ticket, the parking thing, and they still park in front of Hunter Steiner overnight all day.
We had a tenant, Council, we had a tenant that lived on Genesee Street as well, had a permit and just chose to park up front. She paid for the permit and still chose to park.
It's crazy.
Because it was more convenient.
How is the, the part, no parking overnight, is that working out?
Over the summer, I think people were parking there for some, downtown, the businesses there from overnight there. Mike Tale, that had actually reached out to me, said he's been seeing some vehicles overnight. So we, I sent some emails out to the overnight shift. They're going to start giving that a little more, get some warnings out there and get that some attention. So before the snow actually does start piling up, that we don't have anybody out there.
Those that will, I guess, somebody that can pay $900 and think it's no big deal. I don't know.
Mr. DeVito, did you have something to say?
I did, yes. Councilor Genatina, I just wanted to add a couple of things to what you're saying about like the parking lots and the parking garage as far as maybe incentives or something there. We do see a lot of businesses that do purchase parking garage passes for their employees. So I mean, we do have businesses that do think it's important that their employees go in the right areas. And then we also have businesses such as St. Mary's or the Citizen who've made arrangements with other businesses to have those employees park in their parking lots. So, you know, everybody, like, there's a good majority of people that are trying hard to make this happen and implement parking in addition to all the lots that we have and the parking garage. But it's just, as we all said, it's those repeat offenders that continuously don't think it's important and want to jump on the, on the bus to, to make it happen downtown. So, you know, I, I, yeah, I don't, you know, what do you, what do you do with them all? I mean, they just...
Well, I think, you know, if we can work on that outreach to all the businesses and say, "Listen, we're, we're going to make the investment to enforce two-hour free parking. It's imperative that your employees help us out here..."
Yeah.
"...and use designated areas," you know, and communicate that those fees that are charged for this parking, it is really affordable.
Yeah.
Sergeant Gylfus, at what point is a decision made to boot a vehicle?
Seventy-two hours. Seventy-two hours. If it's something that's not... Seventy-two hours. Seventy-two hours. If it's something that's not, if they owe fines on the vehicle, we would, if it's over a hundred dollars, we can boot it at that point. Then the boot, we give them seventy-two hours with the boot on, then we would tow it out of there. If it's a vehicle that's just left there, it's usually seventy-two hours before we can tow it.
So at a hundred dollars in fines, you can legally boot it?
In the boot and tow, in the boot and tow program, we can legally boot a vehicle after they occur a hundred dollars in fines.
How often do you think that happens?
Well, we've got, it's a sheet, this, it's this thick, it's just, it's another thing. We're in the process now of budgetary-wise and getting equipment, but we got, we're going to set the parking enforcement car up with LPR plate readers, and then they're going to be able to go around and boot their cars based off the plate reader. Right now, the only way we can do it is integrated piece of paper and you put it on and you look for license plates around there. There's thousands of cars on that list probably, at least a thousand. So right now, once we get that up and running, that's in the process now of doing that. It's, we've got the computer in the car now, now we're waiting on some cables for, for the plate reader and just finishing up that project, training the parking enforcement to do it and then getting them out there. We have three, three sets of, we can do three cars at a time, basically. After the three boots are out, that's, that's pretty much where we're at with it. But generally, if it's a hundred dollars, we try to work with the, the person before we'll boot it. Once they get up over, you know, two, three hundred dollars, then that's where we'll probably actually boot it. We try to give a little bit of leeway. Maybe there's a reason they're not paying it, but the bigger fines are the ones that we usually tend to go after. A normal vehicle that isn't on the boot list also, we usually wait seventy-two hours before we move it or have it removed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I'll weigh in last. I agree with Councilor Cody. We need to do the upgrades. And we, we've got to get it, I don't know how. I wish, I wish I had the answer. But we have to get a handle on this. You know, is it going to come to the point where there's no free parking? Because the abuses, I don't want to go to that end. But I sympathize with the business owners. They're trying to keep spots open in front of their business. But is it fair for them to go four or five doors down and park there for the, I, I think if there was an easy answer, we would come up with it years ago. I, I really don't. It's like Groundhog Day. This is a saying, the water, we talk about water, we talk about parking meters. It's almost cyclical here, you know, the things we talk about. I, I wish, I wish I had an answer, but I don't, so...
Well, just to that, it is cyclical. And in my last hour of being a city counselor, I've talked more about cats and parking this week than ever. It must be justice here.
See, they're telling you, you shouldn't have got done. You shouldn't have got done.
Yeah.
So just so I'm clear, I think the direction that we're giving is, let's do the upgrades, let's invest in the system for two-hour free parking so that you can enforce it, you and your staff can enforce it properly. And, and you're comfortable with that?
Yes. And the only questions I would have, is I would talk to the manager about that, is the equipment that's currently out there, like our kiosks, that sort of stuff, that stuff we're going to leave up for a while, take down, things of that, that nature. Because obviously, the kiosks, the parking lot ones we'll need, the ones on the street and the meters on the street won't need anymore. There's a lot of things that you've got to consider. Once you take the meters down, then that's what people use to judge where the parking spots are. So we're going to have to, there's paintings going to have to be done and a lot of little things that come along with it that we'll have to, I don't have a price tag on that, but you look at some places where there's not street markings or road markings on the road, you have, people walk to the meter and that's how they judge where they have to park. So we'll have to make sure that the, all that kind of stuff gets done.
Did you say take the meters out? Why would we do that?
If we're going to go to two, three-hour parking, we wouldn't need them anymore.
Well, I was, I figured you'd still need the meters.
No, because you're only supposed to be on the street for two hours.
It's a two-hour limit anyway.
It's a two-hour limit.
Won't need them anymore.
And that's, that's actually in existence now.
The two-hour, right?
No, a two-hour limit.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's still, there's a two-hour, yeah, that, that's where the parking enforcement comes into play. They'll go out, they'll mark the car and that's where we have to come up with, we'll have to do some research to find out what the best solution for that will be, but we'll have to be able to mark the parking spot so they can say that car was in parking spot eighty-four or however we're going to do it. I don't have an answer for that right now, but, so when they come back, because that car's still in the same spot, because after you mark a hundred cars and come back, you're not going to remember every single car that was parked. They'll know it was in that general area. You just, so we have to find a way to mark our stalls and make sure that, that they're all, all the spaces are marked so we can efficiently...
Can I just add one more thing, quick? You know, I think, bottom line, it's changing the mindset of how folks think because both Officer Gilfus and I have both heard people say that have come from bigger cities, they think this is a drop in the bucket. We pay five hundred dollars for a parking ticket, this is our form of parking here, this is no big deal. We want to sit on the street. We pay thousands of dollars in bigger cities and in New York City. So, you know, paying five hundred dollars here to have the prime spot on East Hill right above your apartment, it doesn't, it doesn't do anything. It's changing the mindset of what the principle, of what the program is supposed to be about. And it's for the customers and for the people patronizing downtown and the city.
I agree. It's the educational part of it, it's...
So, I, so if whatever is decided, you know, if, if it's two-hour free parking in perpetuity, then, then the, the, this, how do I say? Not that the meters are taken away, but if it, if we're still kind of, kind of trying to like figure it out, you know, that, because you don't, you can't put them back once they're, they're taken away.
You can't.
So I'm just saying, like, you know, I, I'm kind of like taking this, like another, we just, this has only been six months. You know, we can come back, revisit it. I know that you don't, Councilor McCormick, you don't want to have the future councils revisit every six months, but I do think, like, if, if we see, if we see the value and if there is, you know, if there is increased business, if there is, you know, give it a full year, let's see it, that sales tax.
Oh, no, I understand.
But if, if, you know, the comp controller is saying, you know, you know, that, if the enforcement of it is done right and, and...
Well, if you ask the merchants in six months, they're still going to say they love free, two-hour free parking.
Some of them.
You don't know about that?
Some of them.
So, oh, some of them.
Some of them, I do.
Well, the ones on the parking committee or the comp.
Well, I, I mean, out of all those eighteen responses, they were all in favor of it if there was monitoring and ticketing was done. So they do love it as long as we had that in place.
So how about we find a middle ground here? How long do you think it would take for you to implement an enforcement process?
I can reach out to, the biggest thing is going to be is getting that software done. We're, the handhelds right now are in it, we're having issues with them now from a firmware up, a software update they already did. So we're in the process of trying to get that straightened out. Once we get that done, they can probably do that install all at the same time. And it's just a matter of us figuring out a marking system for, for stalls.
So why don't we give you some time, whatever time you need to get that in place. And once that's in place, active up and running, let's do it for six months, evaluate it, see if the enforcement part of it works, and then revisit it in six months. Do we want to make it permanent? Do we want to extend it another year?
Yeah, that's a big...
But I don't know that we should make a long-term decision until we have an enforcement process in place and make, and we can make sure that it works.
I like that idea.
And all the merchants that, while they like the two-hour free parking, it needs to be enforced, let's make sure that they feel that it's being enforced.
And, and that gives time for the education part, because if that's not working, then, then we do need to revisit some of the penalties for deterrence of abuses of parking space, spaces. So...
Yeah. And I think with, with many of them, that's what I have found, is that they're just not going anywhere. And, and they'll sit and pangle all day and it doesn't make any difference. Because it's the entitlement. They feel entitled to be there.
So I, I do, there may be language and an ordinance or law that needs to happen just to kind of, you know, make it clear. Because what's happened is that the, the vendors or the, the, the store owners in downtown Auburn have all seen the same, see the same issue, is that there are, you know, there are abusers of this, this system. And we want to make sure that we're, we're, we're addressing that. And I think six months will give us the, the data we need, even though we do have good data now, but just... And the education. If we can solve it within six months and there's, and there's less, but if it's still there, then the council needs to do something to, to make it more enforceable for the parking, for parking.
Sergeant Gilfus, do you know if in other communities, and again, I know this is up to the judicial system to set the fines, do you know if they have like a sliding scale or an escalating scale on parking fines? So, you know, your first ticket is twenty dollars, get, get up to five, the fines start escalating?
Not to my knowledge. Everything that's kind of stuff the way we have it, where if you don't pay the fine, it doubles. But it's, pretty much everybody has that, that in place. There's nothing where I know where each of the fines, it raises it up, not that I'm aware of. I can do some research and get that answer if you would like.
I'm just curious, you know, because I think the biggest problem we're seeing is some of the downtown living. And because, you know, while it's great living downtown, the parking situation isn't all that great. And, and the thing is, when, when you choose to live in an apartment downtown, you, you know that going in, that there isn't parking in front of the building, that you may have to park a block away. So I think that that's going to continue to be an issue. And quite frankly, if you can afford the rent in some of these apartments, I don't think a twenty-dollar ticket is going to be a deterrent.
That's where the most of the municipalities, they, they get you that first head seat, they're fifty or seventy-five dollars. They don't even, most places, like I know Syracuse is in that forty or fifty-dollar ranges where they, that's where they start. Like I said, we're, we're about halfway where everybody else is. It's very, very reasonable here as far as fines and fees go. And that might be part of our problem.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think, I think it has to be a monetary enforcement of some kind because educating them, making them aware, we've done, I've, I've personally done that with several of them, and they just, they don't do it because they, it doesn't hit them in the pocket. And again, they feel that it's okay to be out there. It's, they're not going by the principle that it's for your customers and the program is for people to come downtown and be able to have spots to go into the businesses. So, you know, whether it's a monetary enforcement or it's something else, there's just those certain people. They, they already have their mindset. They're not going to change their ways unless it's extremely drastic, unfortunately.
Sergeant, you somewhat said where we're at, or?
So as, as a recap, I guess I'll, we'll get right on the, getting something in place as far as the software and, and some way to address the parking enforcement efficiently, efficiently. Once I have that, I'll let the city manager know. And then if you guys want to start to tighten the clock at that, it shouldn't take us more than a month or two to get that all in place. And then we'll start from there.
Okay.
And we'll leave all the crap, equipment in place and won't touch any of that, I've seen, until way down the road. Because that's not something we want to pull down if we're going to kind of switch them back.
Thank you.
Does that work, Counselor?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.